Okay, what's up everybody? Time for historical book club. I'm gonna get a microphone. Okay, you ready?
Yeah, you turn it on, is that right?
Turn the TV off.
Yes, yes, let's turn it down, off.
Yeah, cuz it's too much screen stuff going on.
There we go.
If it's pulling up notes here, you know, for some reason, um, when I came in, I thought that it was showing the hot, showing the mechanic that took off from SeaTac.
Oh.
And crashed. I guess like living, I don't know what it is about SeaTac, a lot of crazy stuff happens there. Is that fake rain?
What is that?
It sounds like rain.
Probably the air conditioner.
That's like, yeah, yeah, this is how you can tell I'm from the Northwest.
What time did you say rain?
That's so funny, cuz it's true, I mean, people in the North-
It would be nice.
Yeah, yeah, no one in the Northwest hardly, well now more of the, more than more has air conditioning. Um, so it didn't even ask me to show anything, hey, so it's Katie's birthday today.
Happy birthday Katie.
Happy birthday Katie. And so damn, okay, so it's sort of worked out because of the number of Tuesdays that it's been kind of awhile since our last book club.
Yeah, that was weird, I thought it was last week.
I almost, I almost did too.
Crazy.
Yeah, so in other words, it's been awhile and the world has been moving on and a lot has happened.
Yes, a lot has.
And we're gonna get to it, and I have some news too.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Some history news.
Ah, here we go.
Yeah, yeah, kinda, kinda history news.
Well, before we get into that, let's just get a quick Roselle's corner, I wanna get this out of the way. What is your thought on the whole Omarosa thing? Cuz that really heated me, man.
That's so funny, okay, okay, so I'm telling you what I was about to say just then was we weren't, we're not gonna talk about whether the president said the N-word, but I was like, no, hey, you brought it up, we can, what do I think about it?
Yes. I- I was just curious what people thought about that, you were like the first person I seen to ask.
Why am I the first person?
Cuz you're the first person I know that's into politics a little bit, and I just wanted to know your thoughts, and I'm heated, I'm like, really?
Even people that aren't into politics are into this, but, um-
I'm kinda like-
So what ma- what makes you heated?
Because she was all like, oh, Trump is the best, and I like Trump, and his, and he, she was just all with him until he got, she got fired.
Well, historically though, there's always been people who made those choices.
True, but-
You know, there's another word, word for the, impolite word for them, which I won't repeat.
But she dogged, she dogged out some people too, I'm on, I mean, you, like you said, it's kinda like a Benedict Arnold type thing, it's kinda like, you know, you know, you know, like really chose sides with this guy.
Well, there's always been people that do that, and-
I don't know, I just don't, I don't like it dude, she, she's been doing that since the show.
Oh, no, no.
And it's funny, she's been doing that since the show, like she-
It was no surprise, that's what I think.
I was shocked.
None of, really? None of this stuff is a surprise.
Well, I'm just shocked at the fact that if she was gonna get fired, you'd think she would've just kinda choked her head-
Well, she had to write the book.
I know, I know, but she kinda took her-
Because, because if she'd, um, if she'd said it then, then it wouldn't have, um, made a splash when it was time to sell her book, yeah.
Yeah, that is true.
She's seriously, when it comes to, the thing is, when it comes to Omarosa and Trump, she has the last laugh all the, all the way.
That's true.
Well, unless he puts her in jail, I guess, but, you know, and, and, I mean, on the serious side, um, you know, I mean, it's ta- it's terrible, like, the, okay, just anybody can, because, I mean, the whole thing was a huge breach of security. You know, you're not supposed to be able to bring anything like that into the Situation Room. And I really, like, actually, that's sort of crap, I don't know, that name is real, is really funny though, and I don't think it's something, like a staffer being fired, I don't know, I thought there was more serious stuff happening in the Situation Room, but, so anyway, I mean, that's what I think, I think none of it, none of this surprises me, but I'm a, I'm a historian, and so-
Right.
That's kind of, that's kind of the point, so, um, like, one of the things, so, getting back to history, one of the things I'm getting to, so yes, seriously, Roselle, lots of other people will be happy to discuss that with you, I wanna get back to hi- to history stuff, and Zeb Bob, like, I've been reading this book this week, but it's, it's connected, bec- and called Eyes Off, Eyes Off The Pride, Eyes Off The Prize, um, The United Nations And The African Americans' Struggle For Human Rights. And, you know, this is, so hi, I'm, hi Alan, I'm really happy to see new people watching. This is the Historical Book Club, we, we talk about, I talk about, this is Roselle, we talk about global politics and history, and one of the themes, I'm really into this part of history, you know, as, as you know, as you know, um, and I'm interested in the Un- in the United Nations, but what, what this book is about is what was going on for black people during the time that the United Nations and document, and standards were being, um, compiled, and we talked about that before, one of my other interests is the International Criminal Court, and the idea of whether, whether there can be any sort of standard of govern- of governing body, and we're gonna get to our ICC friends a little, a little later, but, so, um, basically, like even back then, it's all, the reason that you, that the, that the United States has never joined any international or fully taken part in any international body is because the US will be hit for racism, for Jim Crow, and so that's what was happening while the United Nations was being created, and so there were black people in the government, because as you read more, as you learn more, you see that, I mean, history is both, I mean, things were both better and worse than you see, cuz like when you read about, um, the NAACP people, people, some of the, there were people that really did have a lot of power and were close to government, and so, um, what was happening with trying to create the United Nations was the beginning of the Red Scare. Okay, of like the 50s thing of people being really afraid of communists, and so that was the political risk or the political issue, like, okay, if you went along, like whether you went along with this international issues, how, how you would determine whether you were sympathetic to the communists or not, and so, okay, you with me? Okay, so here, black people are, and, you know, in a side note, we can talk about black people and the Communist Part- well, the Communist Party, um, we can get, get to that in a, in a second, but there were people that were working on making it be a global movement, okay? Jim Crow, oppression, all of that, of making it human rights, and the US really didn't want it, didn't wanna do that, and so, you know, and because of being afraid of being called soft on communism along for, along for other reasons, and so, there were, the issue split the NAACP, because there were people that wanted to just go on and be all like, yes, human rights, human rights, we want, we're gonna push, or however, from the power that we do have, we're gonna keep working to be part of the United Nations, because then Jim Crow, you know, the US would get hit for Jim, for Jim Crow. You know, we're talking, cuz we're talking about like thousands of people being lynched each year, and I mean, that was all, that was all happening, and we've talked about this before, whether there's different definitions of genocide, but the discussion then, and with the whole climate of post-World War II and the Holocaust, was people were trying to figure out or establish like some kind of morality, and I can, you can also see how, um, it could be manipulated in the US to be like, oh, we're not, we're not like these, like these Nazis, so Jim Crow's not so bad, and it's like, that's not the fucking point. Okay, so are you with me on, there's that with the issue there of, okay, so, cuz there were black people, and some of them were more within the power structure that were saying, no, let's go along with the ones that just want to put in a modified treaty, um, and basically, continue to cast our lot in the United States and keep working for civil rights. The difference is civil rights and human rights.
Right.
So, I know to a lot of people that wouldn't make to, that wouldn't make too, too much di- too much difference, but, I mean, I hope it do, I hope it does to people, um, but, so, there would've been the Omarosa of those times, okay, see, and, okay, see, one of the things, um, I learned that was interesting about this was, I've talked about Eleanor Roosevelt before, and who's just amazing and all that, does all this stuff, so it's great to hear about stuff she did that wasn't so great, because she was known in a lot of ways for progressivism, um, not just, I mean, she was progressive in a lot of wa- ways as far as race when she was First Lady, but in some respects, it was different after she left, like, office or whatever, First Lady, she was on the board of the NAACP, and there were people that were really against her because they felt she is more sort of like, okay, let's all like, go along with, go along with, with the US platform, and she, Mrs. Roosevelt, was going into the Red Scare more herself, and so coughing out, and, but, another situation where I mean, it was a complicat- complicated choice, like, maybe there were, it was different for her while she was First Lady, there was, you know, she could bring visibility and acclaim to a lot, to a lot of things just by doing them, she was really, she went down in a coal shuttle.
Yeah.
In a coal shed and all of that, and she really like reached, reached out to people, and so that stuff matters, but she was on the team, she was on the, the US delegation to the United Nations to work out the treaty, and so, okay, there's all of that going on, and then there's the relationship of African Americans to the Communist Party. Okay, so we talked about that some with like, um, well, with all the different people that we talk about, about Bayard Reston, and Ralph Bunch, and basically, any ba- any like intellectu- intellectuals that wa- that were interested in changing the world were part of the Communist, many of them were part of the Communist Party in the nineteen, in the 1930s, because it was about econ- economic justice, but then the Communist Party showed that they didn't care about human rights, and so principled people, like most of these gentlemen, and Bayard Reston and Ralph Bunch, left the, um, left the Communist Party, and there was a major organization called the NNC, the National Negro Congress, founded by Ralph Bunch and, um, Jim Farmer, and Ralph Bunch left because there began to be too many communists in it, but, we talk about that, um, with the complicity with, um, you know, Mobutu and all of, and all of them, one of the things we talk about is DR Congo, and complicity after, in the, after independence, and so, okay, shit, we keep going back and forth on this about Congo, but where they're like, okay, is there or isn't there with Ebola, it's been so many times, like back and forth, but, okay, so, but I wanna get back on my train about the Communist Party and Afri- and African Americans, but I didn't really lose the train because it's about choices.
Right.
And and about getting it ahead, and it's about having different, um, different interests, and so that's, so, in the period of, um, forming the Uni- uh, the United Nations, we were talking about, okay, talking about how communism factored in then, and so, basically, the members of the NAACP, I mean, people were just so connected, and that's one of the things I'm really excited about with the film I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be bringing here about, um, yeah, gonna bring another film, um, so, wow, okay, that was so, that was, does that ta- tell you, uh, more about Omarosa?
Yeah, that does, that tells me a little bit about her.
Okay, so, there, so, we're, so there was the issue of, but basically, just, I don't know, it's the sort of thing I have to let sink in, like, wow, can you imagine if people had been able to advocate so that the United States signed on to the genocide treaty, and then the United States would've been prosecuted for, um, called to, called to account for Jim Crow.
Hmm.
That's deep.
That's real deep.
So, man, I'm such a, I'm such a dreamer, I still believe in the, the United States, but so anyway, we follow the United Nations here, and that is one, I mean, the United Nations loves to stick it to, to stick it to the US, um, I mean, you know, they can't, so, at, so at the time of working on this treaty, um, people in, you know, people had, some of the leaders, I mean, had different relationships with the Communist Party, but somewhat, but, not really, I mean, they, but, you know, again, and we, we're not gonna get into McCarthyism right, right now, but they were all like getting slammed because of that, but, um, okay, so, okay, co- well, complicity, that's, that's, that's one of our, one of our themes, and that's the argument or whatever that people have been saying, have been using for those that cross different lines, and, um, oh, hey, thanks, did I leave that here?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
I just remembered it.
Thank you, you know what I looked for when I was lea- when I was leaving and I couldn't, and I couldn't find it? Cool, tha- thank you, um, okay, wait, wait a minute, now you really did that.
I just had to remember that, because I would forget to give it to you, and you would probably still be looking for it, and I was like, that's her.
Oh, yeah, polit- politically, I feel like, I, I de- idealistically, we should be able to judge, to judge someone as, as a person by their own actions, or, I don't, I mean, I don't judge who she is as a human being, or, or, I mean, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, it's all just a, they're just a fucking cesspool, and I don't know, you just keep, I mean, it doesn't make any difference to anyone, to his supporters or anyone, and so, my feeling about everything politically is, you know, what I would be doing about everything, the Supreme Court Justice and all this, it's like, okay, strike a deal, pick your shit up and move on, okay, that's what drives me crazy. I mean, have you been in a bad, have you, okay, you've been in bad situ- in bad situations, okay? You can like, get up and work through the bad, the bad situation, and, or you can just sit and wallow in it.
Right, right.
And that is how I feel with our fucking, with our fucking government, and I know, government, I mean, with, with our, with our part, with our party, with my, the Democrat, the Democrat, that is my problem. Well, I believe in making in, making deals, oh my god, okay, this is sort of related, I, I went to a Vallejo School Board meeting.
Yep.
And I have never been to one before, I mean, I have friends that are involved in it, and we talked about this before, we've talked about char- have we talked about charter schools on here before?
Yeah, we have.
We have, okay, I thought so, um, so that was one of, one of the issues, but I could, I could not fucking believe how rude the school board people were, I mean, a cou- a couple of them were these grumpy old white guys, and somebody said, somebody was like, oh, he, he was my gym teacher thirty years ago, and it's like, why are you fucking here, like, basically, a lot of people got up to talk, a lot, and were talking about how there's no one like them on the sc- on the school board, um, they're all white, and I think maybe, like, a couple of them are Filipino, and so at the end, one of the school board meetings, he, he just made this nasty rude comments, just saying like, well, I'm sorry I got elected, blah, blah, and then he started talking, okay, so, we have to pause for a minute to let that whole thing sink in before I get into the history of education, cuz this is going back to these laws, and, um, the ci- civil rights and all that, but it's just, like, what the fuck is the, is the matter with you? I mean, why are, are you here if you don't care about people's concerns? And I was trying, what I've been trying to do, because I work on, um, political stuff with people, is, I don't know, you fucking, I, I was there because I was gonna help a friend of mine run his school board campaign, but I told him, like, you have to, if I help you run your campaign, you have to do whatever I tell you to do, so, no, didn't, didn't happen. So, I would lo- I would love to run it, to run a campaign, so that's why I wa- I was there, but what I was saying to him was, like, look, these pe- these are people that you need to approach these people as in, as individuals, their parents, they want the best for their kids, and what I thought was so amazing was a couple of the people who spoke had gone to Vallejo Schools themselves.
Hmm.
So, it's just like, fuck that, you know, the parents, charter schools aren't, aren't, aren't our enemy, the school aren't, aren't, aren't the enemy, and the enemy is that we have an unjust system, so we were writing, like, we were writing, I was helping somebody write platforms to ask some of the, um, candidates, and I put down like, how will you, um, how will you address their concerns? Like, you don't, like, you don't need to, and then I sent, okay, I, then I sent, one of these days, somebody will use my, some of my fucking platforms, because I sent talking points to someone, um, for the candidates, I lo- I love this sort of thing. I mean, there's people that would say it was too political, it's like, yeah, that's, that's, that's the fucking point, like, say, if the issue isn't whether you're for or against charter schools, you can, um, the reason, I mean, they're legal, it's, it's stupid to be, it's a stupid way to put it, because they're legal, and people are allowed to ha- to have them, and so I'm not gonna be, shouldn't be against them. The charter school petition here in Vallejo was rejected because they don't have the right paperwork and all, and all of that, and so the way, I mean, so the way to do this politically, which people don't understand, is, it's not about, make it about the individuals.
Right, right, right.
And like, in, on, make it in a non-pejorative way, not like, oh, you fucked up, you didn't do the, the paperwork, it's, I want, and I'll be speaking out about this, whoever it is, like, talk to the parents, and, you know, be like, okay, we can't, um, you know, we recognize that you, you know, we're not gonna vote, we're not gonna vote for you to have a charter school, or, what, or whatever, but we still care about your concerns, so anyway, okay, so, the guy, okay, so the school board president started talking about, I mean, it was unbelievable, this is 2018, he started saying, like, ba- that if, you know, that tired, like, reverse racism, um, like saying, like, you got, what if we were being looked down on, because, like, it's the same thing to look down on us, and, um, you know, like, ba- like, basically, you know, like accusing black people of making like assumptions or whatever about races, you know, that, that whole thing, and, um, he talked about a documentary he'd seen, and I could extrapolate what he was talking about, he had it all wrong, about a school that was, that was desegregated, and then the black family that had been in the court case missed their other school, and what he was talking about was the actual, um, family, the Brown family, and Brown versus Board, Board of Education, because they had a really nice school, most of the schools, a, a whole, of the schools that black kids went to were really crummy, so they, you know, I mean, but not, not all of them, and so they had to find a school- And so they had to find a school that had ni- that was nice and well supplied and all of that. In order to take the legal case to show that separate but equal is not equal. Cuz it couldn't be, because in like eighteen ninety five, a whole lot of the stuff that's happened in this century. Been based on Plessy versus, um, Ferguson, which established separate but equal. So what they were saying, what they were saying like all along, like, okay, you know, if you guys have this. You can, it's okay that you can't go here and like, a, even if they, even if it was comparable. That that's not okay. But so basically, it was about them, it was about that one thing. It's like, dude, you have it so screwed up and you're using the same racist arguments. That have been used like forever and so there's a couple more people running for, running for the school, the school board. And somebody sent me something on Fa- on Facebook and he's a black guy and I was just like, hey, glad you're, glad you're running. Thanks for ta- thanks for taking it on. So. Yeah. Oh, oh, it's you. Okay, we're gonna take a break. Wanna do that? Okay.
Let's do it.
We'll be back.